Hafadee, welcome. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Wednesday, October 19, 2022, and the time is about 2:40 PM. In compliance with the open government law, notices for this public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post and posted on the Government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Wednesday, October 12 and October 17, 2022. The hearing was live, this hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel, and notices were also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on the same days. So the rules of engagement for today would be that anyone who's going to testify, please start by introducing yourself, putting your name on that record, so that when we're transcribing it, we will know who is speaking at that time. We have two agenda items for today. Bill number 283-36 LS, introduced by Senator Anthony Ada, is an act to authorize Imaga Hagan Guahan to sell a portion of Block 8 in New Agat designated as Block 8 Park Area, and to deposit the proceeds of the sale into the Chamor Land Trust Infrastructure and Survey Fund. There's also Bill number 329-36 COR, introduced by Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes. It's an act to eliminate an inadvertent split zoning designation of C Commercial and R2 multifamily dwelling zones to a full C Commercial Zone on Lot 5071, Number 1-2-R2 in the municipality of Timun in Guam. I'd like to thank my colleagues for being here this morning, beginning with the Vice Speakers, Senator Tina Munya Barnes and Senator Anthony Ada, Senator Telotitekui and Senator Joanne Brown. All right, so I was told that the Director of Land Management is on his way, but we will begin with an introduction of the first bill by the sponsor, so I'd invite Senator Anthony Ada to introduce the bill, 286, sorry, 283-36.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 283-36 LS is an act to authorize Imaga Hagan Guahan to sell a portion of Block 8 in New Agat designated as Block 8 Park Area. And what does this, Madam Speaker, is that it allows a homeowner the opportunity to purchase government land adjacent to his house lot to comply with setback laws requirements. And although this, you know, it's uncommon, this does happen at times. Some homeowners acquire their homes without the knowledge that the home is situated on the lot that violates the setback law requirements and makes it practically impossible for the homeowner to obtain a mortgage or refinance the property or improve or repair the home. And this bill allows them to, once again, purchase a significant amount of adjacent government land to comply with it, and it's not to exceed 3,600 square feet. The homeowner will be required to pay for the fair market value for the property and to cover the costs for appraisals and surveys that are necessary to determine the minimum setbacks and establish the fair market value for the lot. And Madam Speaker, behind the homeowner's home, the government property that is there, it's actually a park that hasn't been used in many, many, many years, so it's practically not a usable park. And between the park and the homeowner's residence is actually a ravine, like a riverway. So what the homeowner wants to also do at his own expense is to re-reinforce that portion of the embankment on his side, so that he'd be able to have a steady foundation and lot and be able to, you know, not worry about erosions or, you know, eventually having issues with his home later on. There are several homes that are also in that situation down, further down a little bit on the river there, but, you know, hopefully we'll be able to get this situated, get the homeowner situated, and address these issues as they come up one by one. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. We've passed out some maps that were provided to us, but we do not have any maps, official maps from the Department of Land Management yet, so I'm hoping that they're going to bring those maps. But as we proceed, we'll now hear from those who've signed up to testify on this bill, 283. We've got Mayor Kevin Siswiko, Mayor Bill Kinga, if you'd like to provide testimony? Okay, so, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Senators. Honadu'len, Sijus Masi, for having me. My name is Kevin Siswiko, constituent of the village municipality of Agat. I would like to thank the author of this, Senator Tony Ada, for actually coming out and taking the time to reach out to me on the personal level for my home. I'd like to just give a brief description of what has happened in history. So I purchased the home in 2005 in its existing condition under the, under Community First, was granted the loan, and then I went back two years later with Bank Pacific for a lower interest rate, and I was granted the loan again. And when I was trying to get a refinance loan because of the lower interest rates, again, I was told that the home is now in compliance because it's actually within government property for the extension that was built prior to me purchasing the home. And so it's very difficult for me right now to make any kind of movement with the home or to even, you know, get the lower interest rate, which is, you know, in the market rate right now. And so that's the reason why, you know, I've come before the legislature. I've tried to work with the appraiser before, who said that, you know, all it would take is go to Land Management and get a variance letter, so that that way they can, you know, we can submit it into the bank, and the bank could somehow take the variance letter and approve the loan. However, that wasn't the case. I was sent back and forth, and they said the property belonged to Parks and Rec, and then I went to Parks and Rec, and they said, no, it belongs to Chamor Land Trust. Then Chamor Land Trust sent me back to Land Management, and they sent me back. So it's just been a whole entire circle of going to the different agencies, trying to find out who actually owns the land. So the land behind the house is of no use, because it's, one, it's almost landlocked. And the reason why, in digging into the history of the land, and the reason why they clarified it as a park area is because there used to be a bridge that would cross over the river to the next block. And so that bridge has, I think, collapsed maybe in the early 90s, and it's not of any existence right now. So it's a very small piece of property that is under the government. And again, you know, I'm hoping that I can finally get this taken care of, so that way we can proceed with, you know, of course, the re-mortgaging of our house, so that way it's more affordable for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. If you could just wait for a while there, I'm going to invite the Department of Land Management Director, Director Borja. Do you have any testimony that we should make copies of, Director? All right, if you could please join us.
You want me to go to, go right into the?
Sure, thank you.
Yes, my name's Joseph Borja, I'm the Director of Land Management, and I'm here to provide information on Bill 283 concerning Lot 47, Block 8. And as you requested, Senator Speaker, this is the map for the lot, the area. It's five pages long, but don't let that scare you, it's just a five-page map. And what it is, is basically the entire block area, and then broken down to that, so that I can submit as a written testimony for the record. And then the other item that you asked for, Speaker, is the list of the landowners in that area, maybe adjacent, and as you may know, the Block 8, the park area, is a large area, and it's next to, oh, I don't know, maybe about 20, 30 lots. So what we did is we just printed out the tax roll for the urban agate, and then you can take it from there. Just a couple of comments on the bill. Maybe the bill should be reviewed by a legal counsel. I noticed on the title that it does say to deposit the proceeds of the sale into the Chamor Land Trust Infrastructure and Survey Fund. I guess it is in the title, but I didn't see it on the enactment part, in the narrative of the bill, as to where the proceeds would go. So it is in the title, like I said, but I didn't see it in the body, so maybe a legal counsel can take a look if that's, if that enacts the deposit of the proceeds. So where to deposit the proceeds of the sale should be addressed. It's only in the title, but not in the enactment part of the bill. And I'm wondering, was Land Trust also invited to the hearing? Okay.
Yes, of course.
If the proceeds of the sale are to be deposited into the Chamor Land Trust Infrastructure and Survey Fund, and my apologies to the mayor for being given the runaround, what he actually needs, in a way, is not really a letter of variance, but legal nonconforming, which in this case is pretty tough, because it's an encroachment rather than a, like a setback. Setback is a violation is you're too close to your property line, and encroachment is you crossed your property line. So that's a little bit of a big difference. If the proceeds are to be given to the Land Trust, I suggest that further bills like this should be directed to the Chamor Land Trust for work such as researching the map, researching the tax roll for the adjacent owners. I believe the Land Trust has quite capable people to provide this kind of information, if it is. Now, whose property is it? Recently, the Parks and Recreation Bureau Statistics and Plans submitted a park plan, and in it they claim the, and this is what they call a community park, the park is inside the community. You have these types of parks in Dedido, you have these types of parks in other villages where the subdivision is planned, so that there is a park in the property, I mean, in the subdivision, so this is a community park. But in the recent meetings that we had with Bureau Statistics and Plans and DPR, as well as Department of Agriculture, DPR, I think, is claiming these community parks, and then they work into MOU with the mayors of that specific village, like they do in Dedido, that, hey, Mayor, this is still our park, but you're authorized to, you know, clean it up and help on that. Also, I believe in the GCA, and I can't remember the title right away, but mayors were given jurisdiction for maintenance over certain parks. I don't know if this one is listed, you know, as being under agate. I know, like, Ordot Chalampago is a maintenance jurisdiction over the Jose Toigui Park, and then the various, the various mayors, the various municipalities get assigned those parks, you know, accordingly. So that's basically my testimony, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Borja. You wanted to add something, Mayor?
Just to add on further to Mr. Borja's, you know, statement, behind the home is actually a large, a large portion that is taken up by a river, you know, as Senator Ada had stated. And so I don't think that there's even room for you to put a swing set there, or even any type of playground equipment there. And a large portion of the property is being eaten up already by erosion, and so it's a really small property when you look at it, when it's going down. So the map does no justice to what it's showing, because it's just showing Block 8, and it's showing Park Area, but on a huge portion of that property is actually the river that starts from Erskin Drive through VFW and comes straight down right beside, behind San De Cedro and South Uwennial Street. And so it takes up a huge portion of that property.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So Director Borja, if you could help us here. The park area, I know you're talking about the forest plan, not the park plan that was submitted recently, right? The forest plan?
And I believe they may have included community parks in there. I know that when we were at the seminar conference, whatever, that I brought up the issue of community parks, who's got jurisdiction over it?
Right. But what is your, who has the title? What do your records show?
Title? Title, Governor Guam. This subdivision was created by the military under case number 9-47, which actually created the village of New Agat in September 21, 1948. And I don't know if there's a title to it, an actual certificate of title.
All right, so Government of Guam, do you believe it was transferred to the Chamor Land Trust pursuant to the public law, the 22nd Guam Legislature? That transferred all properties that were not prior reserved?
Yeah, if it wasn't reserved by public law, but in this particular case, maybe not. I would have to look to see if there was a public law to authorize the sales of these lots, because Village of New Agat actually was created from land taken from large land owners, and then they created a subdivision with the streets and like that. So there must have been a transfer, it's probably one of the earlier documents, the five-digit document, but it belongs to the government, who has jurisdiction over it? I would say Parks and Rec.
All right, the reason I'm asking, because if it's Parks and Rec, then it's not Chamor Land Trust, right? So it was my, and you were telling us Chamor Land Trust should do this work, because they might get the proceeds. My understanding is they were going to get the proceeds because it's Chamor Land Trust land. And if you can't determine that, I'm not sure who's going to be able to determine that for us. We are looking to you to do that. That's my hesitation on this bill. It's like, I need, I just need to know, whose lot is it that we are going to be selling? And then what other landowners are, have the exact same issue, right? Or not? I don't know. If it's just, and I can't see the river on this map that's being described, it doesn't show, so I can't tell. So what I also wanted to talk about was landlocked, is, does that leave this park or landlocked? I think the Senator mentioned that.
No, not to the, not in this map. It's got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven 10-foot easements.
What kind of easements? Dental?
10-foot easements.
Oh, 10-foot.
As shown on the map. As access to the, to the park area.
So this was the same type of situation that I was in almost 15 years ago, when I first went to Land Management, when I went to Parks and Recs, when I went to Chamor Land Trust, of who actually owns this piece of property. And Director is right, I was told to get a legal nonconforming, the bank said to get a forbearance letter, but then again, nobody wanted to issue it to me, because we're back at the same situation. And that's the reason why I decided to take this route and approach the Senator to help me, so that we can finally rectify this issue. And when you go to the property, the entire property for where it's sitting, there's a large warehouse that takes it all the way back to the back, and then you can see how the properties are clearly lined out. I don't know where the easements are there, but it's a very, very small parcel. And I was talking to the adjacent landowner to me, which is Geraldine Sablon, and that used to be all their property. It used to be former Mayor Carol Sablon's parents' property, the whole thing, as he was, as the director pointed out. And so that whole entire property is all surrounded, and it's all private property, so I don't know where the easements are. But I will tell you that, from my perspective as a landowner, the whole entire backside is already, I mean, a large portion of it again, is the river. And so it's very clear, if you, if you know where Mount Carmel Church is, right behind it, there's that large river that flows through, it takes up most of the property. So I don't know how the map is showing easements, but it's private property.
Where on this map are you? They have Block 8, which is the large, but which, I don't know what you call these, we're 47, 48, 49. Are you one of those?
Sorry, my home sits on Block 40, Subject 47.
47, okay.
Property 47.
So, so adjacent to your property, it shows a 10-foot easement?
Right, but I don't know.
There's no road.
There's no road there.
Right, and then there's another.
The houses are so close together, it's, I don't know where the, other than the easement between the homes and between the properties, that's, you know, that's standard easement, right? For any property homeowner that's there. But if you really look at it from point to point on that map that you're looking at, there's a point, I can't see it, it's kind of blurry, but the river takes up a large portion, right? So on property 47, the two points, it actually makes a triangle, and that, the rest of it is all river. I can't, again, I apologize, I can't really, here you go. So from, from point behind the, my property in 47, point 42 to 44?
Let's say, when you say behind, you mean, okay, 40?
On your, on your map that you're looking at?
Yes.
My house sits on 47, right? So there's two points, there's 42 and 43, and the next point over is point 44, right behind 49, in between 49 and 50.
I'm not seeing those. Okay, on the, we gave you guys a couple maps, there, on one it shows 49 and 50, and what were you saying about 42 and 43?
So 43, point 42 and 43 is right behind my home, right? That's the two boundary points. Boundary point 42 and 43.
No, we don't have those numbers. No, I'm talking about, we can only see the squares and the numbers inside those.
Can I approach?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, there, the one that Senator's going up.
Okay, on this map? Go ahead.
So point, point 42 and point 43 is right behind my home, which is a subject property. And if you take 42 to 44, the whole entire area after that is actually the entire river. So it looks like it's a large area property that we're talking about, because it's going all the way back to Block 8 Park Area behind Duennia Street. That's also, that's, that's what, that's what everyone's considering to be the park area. But behind my house, it's also considered to be a park area.
Okay, so there is a park in Block 8?
That's all river.
It's all river?
It's all river.
There's no park?
There's no park.
Okay.
Block, Block 8, Madam Speaker, Block 8 is, is the park, it's one whole block.
It's one whole block, but it's a river that runs through Block 8. Behind those homes, between Duennia Street and San De Cedro Street, is a huge river that runs between that.
Okay, that's clear, between those two streets. All right, then, and the property that you want to buy is not the 10-foot easement?
No.
It is the park.
It's right behind, right behind, on point 42 and 44, there's just a small slither of property behind, right behind 42 and 43.
Okay.
So it's not the entire 42 to 44, I'm not even asking for that whole portion, I'm just asking for a portion, so that way it can be in conformance.
Right, and so there's no map of that either, right? So I'm curious how that's going to look? Normally, we get maps of the proposed purchase, like, so it's going to be like a line parallel to the current 42 to 43 line?
Correct.
Something like that?
Yes.
That comes out a certain number of feet, for a total of 3,600 square feet?
Correct.
It just doesn't show the parameters of that, like? All right, so Director, if you can just clarify again, with this situation, is a nonconforming use available for an encroachment or not?
It's an encroachment.
Right, so there's, it's not available, is that right? Or it is?
Which one, the letter of a nonconforming, you mean?
No, that's not, right? But what about, is a remedy for the encroachment available?
To acquire the?
Through Land Management?
Not on an administrative process. You don't have an administrative process.
Okay. The only other thing would be the owner, Government of Guam, dealing in, that's why it's here at the Legislature.
That's why it's here, that's correct.
All right, just want to clarify those things. All right, I'm going to open it up for questions and comments from the panel, Vice Speaker.
Sijus Masi, Madam Chair, and as I listen intently to this, this efforts, I must say, Madam Chair, that I support that effort, and I understand, I think, Mayor Siswiko, when the purchase was being done before that, there wasn't an issue on getting, on conforming with variation setbacks. And I remember in the 27th Guam Legislature, that implementation by the federal banks said that we, that properties in Guam had to be conforming with the, with those setbacks. And as we look at that, I think, when you look at 3,600 square feet, if you convert it into meters, I think we're only talking literally like a slither, which is 334.45. And Joe, you're the subject matter expert when it comes to land, you could probably do it from the heart. I mean, it's a little slither, and having been in that area before, my father's brother's not too far away, you can see the whole river. So what the request is asking for, Madam Chair, is there, and I know that, that if that request came my way, the first thing I would ask was, did you go to Department of Land Management to check for that, that, that letter, for the banks? And because it's encroaching, we don't have that, it has to come to here. So I understand that, and as I look at the points, I was even drawing it out, I, I know that, that that's why it's needed, because you won't be able to borrow anything, or to improve, or to get anything on that because of that violation. Am I right? Yeah, please?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Madam Chair, thank you, I just wanted to say that comment, only because I'm very familiar with what had happened back in the 27th Guam Legislature, that was the year 2003 and 2004. So I support Senator Ada's efforts in this introduction, and I appreciate the Director of Land Management, Mr. Joe Borja, being here, as, as a lot of folks know that he's been institutional, bank, brain bank for, for the Government of Guam as it relates to lands, and I appreciate him being here to present testimony. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator Titikui? If you could put what you're saying on the, on the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm down here, I have Google Earth on my phone, and I'm trying to find the location, because these maps are not very clear as to where it's at. So I'm going to have them point it out to me, and then take a screenshot and share it with anybody here that would like to see it by Google Earth.
If you could put on the record, please.
Sorry, this right here on the Google Earth map from Senator, this particular portion right here that I'm indicating, this is all entire river. So as you can see, it's oversaturated with a lot of green because of the river, right? So this river runs all the way back here, and this area right here was the Block 8 that everyone is referring to. But this small slither property that I'm talking about, is, this is my home, my home is built right here. So this portion is actually government property. There are no other homes that are behind my house, other than the adjacent, the former King's Store, and then a property right here.
I have some questions with regards to...
I, uh, some questions with regards to, because I was concerned about the adjacent properties, uh, uh, other owners in the area, as I'm looking, and, and as you showed me, um, there's no one directly behind you, because it's the river. But then there is someone on the, on the opposite side of the, the greenage there, and it looks like there's one, two, three, three other homes. Do they at all touch the lot that, that you are trying to inquire?
No, because when, the, the map is very clear as far as what was, what's going to be submitted by the Director of Land Management. So their, their property, of course, will e- eventually border right by the riverside too as well. But to come back a little bit further on that small, on the thirty-six, wouldn't even come close to their property. So I just spoke with, again, um, Ms. Sablon, the owner of the property in front of me, and she's well aware that even behind her is government property too as well. So she owns the property, the two other subject properties that you're, you're, um, referring to.
Okay. So this, and, and just for those listening, it's, it's near, um, Mount Carmel Church and Mount Carmel School. So you're basically right a- across from the school?
Yes.
Okay, and that's where the area that we're looking at? In fact, the gym is just down the street from you, um, I see. Okay, now I know where we're at. I have my bearings here on where the property's at.
The closest landmark, I think, um, that's safe to say is the, um, former, um, King's Store, which is sits on the corner right next to my home. And directly across the street is the, um, Agate Senior Citizen Center.
Yep, now I see it, okay. This Google Earth, that's all we needed. And I did take a screenshot and showed, uh, shared it on the Senate chat, so they can see what we're talking about. My only concern here is, is really who owns the property? Is it Parks, is it really Parks and Rec, or is it Chamora Land Trust? You know, we, it's, it's kind of hard for us to be able to allow anybody to purchase something that we don't know who, or, or what agency it falls under, you know, as, as we move forward. And this property that we're looking at, it's, it's just not able to, to build on. Has there been a surveyor that came out, or some kind of engineer? Um, is this considered wetlands, because it's near the river? Mr. Borja, uh, would this at all be considered some wetlands in the area?
Uh, you know, uh, I'm not a wetlands expert, I, I- You know, there are certain, uh, characteristics of a wetlands, to, uh, for an area to be declared a wetlands. I'm not too familiar with that right now, you know, it's a-
Mr. Borja, um, who would you take out to, to assess a piece of property? Whether it's, uh, can be built on, or if they have any environmental impact? Like an environmental impact statement with regards to the land itself? Because once it's turned over in, to, to somebody who owns it privately, like, you know, Mr. Siswiko, if he owns this piece of property, he can do whatever he wants. Like, um, stop the river, if the river's on that land, he can, you know, barricade it and build a dam, or, or anything like that.
No, he can't.
Right, so is there anybody in, in, in the government, or EPA, or somebody can, to assess this land, to say, well, you know, it's, you can't build on it? Um, there's nothing really here? There is no, like, snails that are endangered, or anything like that, to, you know, to make this clean? And, and turn it over? Who would be, do that kind of assessment?
I don't think it would be one person, it would be, uh, different agencies. For example, if you're concerned about snails, or endangered animals, or plants like that, that would be the Department of Agriculture to make that determination. Uh, if it is wetlands or something like that, that would be Bureau Statistics and Plans. They have a wetlands map, and, uh, also, they have the, uh, requirements or qualifications of a wetlands. So that would be Bureau Statistics and Plans. And to see if it's in their park plan, DPR should have a list of the parks they have, they own. Uh, it would be DPR. I'm having the owners checked on it, but, uh, it, it basically belongs to Government of Guam. How did they get it, and who has jurisdiction on it?
Yeah.
Kind of like common sense, park, Parks and Recreation?
Yeah, well, I, you know, and with all the headache that he's had to go through, you know, I think we, being here today, we can be, be resolved, like, who really owns this? So there's no running around, like, go to this one, we don't own it, go to another one. I mean, it's just been a lot of running around for individuals, so. Exactly, we have, we do recommend Chamora Land Trust, okay. Um, I'm looking forward to hearing from Chamora Land Trust and Parks and Rec as well. You know, um, Madam Chair, I think we should hear from them at least.
And, and that's why I asked if Land Trust was, you know, here, so that they can-
Yeah, I think Parks and Recs would, should be here too as well, because you keep mentioning their name, and, uh, just get through it. Uh, uh, there's a, um, question, is who's the Director of Parks and Rec right now? Do you know, Mr. Borja?
Pelletier.
Warren Pelletier.
W- Warren Pelletier, is the new Parks and Rec Direct- Okay, thank you. Other than that, um, I'm, I'll let my colleague answer the first questions, but, thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator. Director Borja, are you saying?
I had, that, that was, uh, Matt Lengarero, or Matt, our, uh, land agent supervisor, and, uh, we just got word from my office that it's DPR. Yeah.
The property's under the jurisdiction of DPR?
DPR, Government of Guam owns DPR.
Okay, thank you.
What? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what was that?
They said, uh, the property is under the jurisdiction of the Department of Parks and Recreation.
It is for sure, then?
That's according to the-
We'll provide documentation, but yes, I believe I can go on the record that it is, uh, Department of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Brown? Oh, sorry, yeah, Senator Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I understand, you know, the purchase of property, there're gonna be all kinds of issues that can come up. But did you get title insurance when you bought this property? Like most people do when they buy property?
You know, to be quite honest with you, Senator, you, when I, I was twenty-three years old when I bought the house, and actually even the banks were surprised I was coming in to buy a house. And so, being a first-time homeowner, I was under the impression that, of course, everything was there, right? And so, I mean, the property has insurance, and it's, I've been paying for everything, land taxes and everything. But it wasn't until the third time that I came back. And what, the surprising part about this is that I purchased the home, um, through community first, and I went through the first appraisal, and everything came back, and everything checked out well. Two years later after that, I went to Bank Pacific, which is the current, um, holder of my mortgage, and we did the same process all over again, and it, it went through well. And I, the only reason why I was refinancing the home is because, for lower interest rates, mortgage interest rates. And so, on my third time, that I went back to the same bank, Bank Pacific, they said, "Oh, you can't get, uh, you, we cannot refinance your house because of the setback." And I, I, I was surprised, and he said, "You already gave me the home." I, I mean, I'm ready to purchase the home, technically, until I pay it off, it's yours. So I mean, this is, so I, I was really confused about the whole entire thing.
Your bank didn't require title insurance, and the purchase of giving you a loan?
I don't, I don't-
I mean, that's the reason it's there. Most people have to get, or do get, title insurance, so that they do have, uh, research done on the property.
Do, it went through the title-
And if, you know, they guarantee it, and if they don't, then you can, you have a, you know, you have a legal case against them for not, uh-
It, I, I, of course, it went through, it went, I, I don't know the exact title company it went through for the research.
Did you go back and check with that title company? Because, I mean, that's why you buy title insurance, to verify the ownership, and then also that, you know, whatever the score, whatever it is on paper that they say you're getting, is what you're getting, to do the research. I, I'm just bringing, because I'm sorry, those other mechanisms, the uncomfortable thing for me, and I'm just gonna put it out there, because it, there is uncomfort here, not because of the circumstance you're involved in. I mean, I'm sure a lot of people can get into this, just because of the, the history of land mapping and things like this, is, you know, you introduce yourself as, as a resident of, uh, Agate, but you're the mayor of Agate. That's what's uncomfortable here for me, in this position, as a polit- My tendency when I'm in elective office is I don't ask for anything from the government, because I don't want to be looked, any undue view that because of my elected capacity, it can influence others, because I'm in a position of influence. Certainly, for the time I'm in positions of influence, I, I try not to. That's what makes this a little uncomfortable to me, because you are the mayor of Agate.
So on the personal side, I'm, I'm also, I, I can't be the homeowner? Is that what you're saying, or should I wait until?
I'm not against you being a homeowner, Mr. Siswiko, I'm just saying, or Mayor Siswiko. It's just, that's the discomfort for me.
Well, that's the reason why I didn't come here and say I'm the mayor of Agate.
Well, I understand, but there, I'm sure there are many other residents on Guam-
Because of a personal issue, and that's-
Sir, I'm speaking, please. I'm sure there are many other residents on Guam that might find themselves in this situation, where they find an easement that's attached to their property, maybe they procured, and they're not aware of it till years later. I don't know, I'm sure there are. But for me, I'm just being upfront. It's the obvious of the first time I read this bill, my discomfort. I've discussed it with the sponsor, uh, because you are not the average resident. I mean, you're, you're the mayor of the village. And you're coming in, asking the legislature to address something that there were other means to address it to begin with, when you purchased the property. That's why I'm asking, because most people don't come to the legislature for a request for us to sell government property to them. I mean, thirty-two hundred square feet doesn't sound like a lot. My house is only two thousand square feet. We would be authorizing, uh, amount of area that's larger than my house, from my perspective, sitting up here. That's not a small chunk of change. Three thou- thirty-six hundred, a lot of people don't even have a thirty-six hundred square foot house. Maybe some people got a fifteen hundred foot square house. So understand, I mean, there, you know, maybe my other colleagues are being too nice, I don't know. I'm just letting you know, from my perspective, my discomfort about this bill coming before us, it is because of that. And then not having the clear information, if, if it's Parks and Rec that owns the property, then, you know, we don't have Parks and Rec represented here. And I don't know what the long-term use of this, if it's going to be a park or not, or is simply the property gonna be left so that it's not developed? So that the waterway flows through, or whatever the case may be, then, so be it. But I'm just gonna be upfront with you. I, I, I shy away, in my own personal capacity, in the now sixteen years I've been in elective office, I shy away from asking for anything on the table, because I'm in elective office. I have reservations about that. And that's my discomfort, because we actually have you in your current capacity as the mayor. If you were no longer in office, or not in office, then I would look at you as another average citizen out there. But let's not kid ourselves, you're not an average citizen at this moment in time, and neither am I. Neither is anyone sitting on this side of the table. And, and don't think people out there aren't looking at it from that perspective, thinking, "Wow, the mayor, how far the legislature's accommodating the mayor?" They might not even know the details of it, but they'll look at it that way. But that's just, you know that, you're in elective office. Even when you're not doing anything that's a favor to you, people will interpret it as such. So I just want to bring that up. I hope, Madam Chair, that we do get clarification from Parks and Rec, um, and if it's Chamora Land Trust, should the money go to Chamora Land Trust? Or what, what is to be done with this property? Uh, or who the proper legal owner is? Because I have to tell you, I have discomfort in voting on this bill, simply because of the relationship of our elected capacities. I, I, I shy away, I don't ask for any special favors when I'm in elective office like this, because people will interpret it as such, and think that these accommodations are made just by virtue of our respective positions. So I do hope, uh, we get more information, because I, I don't like dealing with land issues through the political process. You know, it, there's so much abuse in the past. I'm not saying maybe this case, but there's so much abuse, and, and, you know, Mr. Borja's too nice to say it, but we know that. And we try to do it through here, like, we're gonna entertain a rezoning again, through the legislature again, which is a political process that should go through land management, because there is a process set up to address zoning. Um, and maybe there is no other recourse, I don't know. But until we get more information that gives us some comfort on this bill, because I'm always looking for comfort, um, I'll just leave my comments there at this point, and really my concerns. Thank you.
All right. Director Borja, can you also check, then, if, the way you described this lot as being, um, I'm trying to find out who distributed, after they condemned it, broke it up into parcels, and if there were any covenants that were included in that? If, if you, if you don't mind just checking that for us, and, um-
That would be, uh, nineteen forty-eight records? I'll try.
But, but didn't, wouldn't title companies have had to do title searches on all of these? You know, some of these lots who, they wanted to build houses, or something?
That, that would be up to the title company, but I would assume as a, you know, as a landowner, that you would check, you know?
All right, and then, um, yeah, so Mayor, if there is any, if you have any title report from the original purchase, if, if you could provide that as well?
Yes, ma'am, I will. And just for the record, ma'am, I'm not asking for any special favors. I do clearly respect and understand where you're coming from, Senator Brown, but I'm not asking for any special favors. Land management could have come to the table and tell you who exactly owned the property. And I'm only asking, the, the only reason why I'm here today is because I was sent through that whole entire circle of going around, trying to figure out what they couldn't even figure out today. And so this is not a special favor. And I'm not asking for the government to just hand it over to me for free, because I'm the mayor, and I'm entitled for a special favor. I'm not asking for a special favor. If the property should be sold to me, I'm asking for it at fair market value.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'm gonna be the one to pay for the appraisal and everything else.
Thank you, Mayor, that, that is correct. That's what the bill says. My concern is that, I'm also concerned that, that's why I asked the Department of Land Management for the adjacent landowners, I just wanted to see if, and anyways, I'm gonna read the testimony from the Chamora Land Trust before I open it up for the sponsor for questions and for closing. The Chamora Land Trust just sent a letter right while we were in here that says, "CLTC supports the requirement of revenues generated from the sale of thirty-eight hundred square feet of Parkway land into CLTC's Survey and Infrastructure Fund. Although we are concerned with how the bill will correct the setback or encroachment issue reducing the Parkway total land area. CLTC has land inventory throughout the island that are adjacent to private property. CLTC is concerned that this may set a precedent for future issues related to land use. Private property owners may expect the government to correct violations of land use laws created by previous landowners or themselves by not obtaining the proper permits." That's signed by the Chair of the Chamora Land Trust Commission. All right, so I have no further questions, but I'm hoping we can get that additional information from, from the two of you. And, um, Senator Adda, as sponsor, you may close, ask questions, or, and, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, uh, Mr. Borja, for coming down with the, the maps. Madam Chair, I think the, the issue with this property is that the, the river is between the park and this, this parcel of, or this small slither of property that's behind Mr. Siswiko's residence. So even if, unless they decide to go and, um, backfill the entire riverbank there, you won't be able to use Block Eight as an entire park, because of the fact that it's separated. The parcel of property that is, that we're requesting, the thirty-six hundred square feet, is on the, on the backside of his residence, with the river abutting to it. So even if, it, even if it was not given to, or, or sold to, uh, Mr. Siswiko, you won't be able to do anything with that small piece of property, unless... But I hope that we'll be able to continue to move this forward. And, uh, Mr. Borja, thank you for the maps, and hopefully we'll be able to get testimony from Parks and Rec as well, and maybe, uh, photos of the back area, and showing exactly what the, the situation is behind the residence. Um, you know, let's just hope it's not too late to where, you know, we, later on, we find that, uh, erosion has gone under the residence, and it, it really affects it then. So, you know, no, we try to do is help our residents. And I think that's what we're here in this legislature for. Regardless of, uh, what we, we personally feel, or what we think, whenever a constituent comes up to us, it is our obligation to try and do what we can. And it's up to us, fifteen senators, to, you know, and hopefully eight comes out in the affirmative, uh, voting for a piece of measure. But I think that's, if we don't do our due diligence in trying to, you know, correct issues with, uh, what goes on in, in, in the community, if we don't take, you know, heart to what, how we can help families in our island, then what are we here for? Sometimes we're not always right, but at least we try to do what is the right thing, regardless of what we feel. But thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Adda. One more question, sorry, Mayor, if, um, so how did we decide on thirty-six hundred square feet? Do you have a survey map that shows how that will be drawn?
So the thirty-six hundred square feet was based on, because the property is, um, it's odd shaped. So part of the, how the river runs, it, it kind of runs this way. So if you were to say twenty by forty, twenty feet, uh, lengthwise, forty feet widthwise, you'd be going into the river versus thirty-six hundred square feet, where you'd be able to adjust it to where it just goes from the river to the back of his residence. Nothing more, and nothing less, just, just to that.
All right, so do you have a, um, survey map that shows that?
He doesn't, but he's willing to pay for the surveying, and he's willing to pay for, uh, what needs to be done to, to remedy the situation.
All right.
Madam Chair, may I have one question, please? Just one, real quick one. Um, now that I'm familiar with the map that you showed me, uh, Mr. Siswiko, then, the area here that's darkened, between forty-seven and forty-eight, your lot is forty-seven, correct? That, that's your lot, right? Okay, so forty-eight is the building, according to the picture, is the building- Okay, so 48 is the building, according to the picture, is the building right beside it? So what you're trying to obtain is in between two buildings, not in the back? Okay, I just wanted to verify that. Okay, thank you. I think the survey is going to help us see exactly where it's at. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you, Senator. There being no further testimony on this bill, we'll consider the hearing on Bill 283 concluded. It is 3:30 PM. Sidus Massey, Mayor, for being here. And Director, thank you very much for your assistance here. We're now going to proceed to our second, I mean, our second bill on the agenda. Bill number 329-36COR. And I invite the sponsor, which is Vice Speaker Tina Munia Barnes, to please introduce the bill. Yes?
If I may interrupt, could you have your staff accept the, this is the maps?
Thank you.
The regional maps and the tax roll. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any copies of maps we should make for this next bill?
Not for me.
All right. Okay, so, just one second, we'll just get some order here. Okay, everyone, we're going to begin the next hearing. All right, so Vice Speaker, you may introduce the bill. Please proceed.
Sidus Massey, Madam Chair, good afternoon, buenos en half a day. Thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me this opportunity for this Bill 329-36 to be heard, which is Bill number 329-36COR, an act to eliminate an inadvertent split zoning designation of C, commercial, and R2 multifamily dwelling zone to a full commercial zone on Lot Number Saying that rap. Lot Number 507-1, number sign 1-2-R2, in the municipality of Timouni, as introduced by myself, Madam Chair. Last term, Madam Chair, I sponsored a bill, which is now Public Law 35-82, exchanging a portion of a boot cart trail to facilitate wider road access for residents living in the area. The exchange was mutually beneficial for the community and the property owner, which was Momo Corporation. Unfortunately, through the process of consolidating land from the exchange, the property was designated a split zone, R2 and C. And because the property owners operate a grocery store with actual uses in relation to the business, the R2 designation prohibits some of their operations. I introduced Bill 329-36COR to hopefully rectify the issue they're having through this bill, and we hope to restore the property to commercial zoning so that they can continue to use their land fully. Before I close on my opening, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, I want to say that the reason why we're doing it is last term, when this was going around, and it took a lot of heartache from the constituents to go through the process, and working closely with the members, it finally got to us. And working through the mayor's office, working through all the concerns, when this thing was done, we thought that that would literally fix everything, but we didn't realize that when integrated, one, once, part of it's commercial and part of it's R2. So this just corrects that logistically, and everything else is in form. So I did not usually, as a sponsor of legislation, as it relates to real property, the maps would be afforded, but because in this area, both was integrated when we did it last term, and everything was submitted for the records, I could pull both separate lots out from the previous term, which is just last term. We have that on file today. So, thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Vice Speaker.
I'd like to... Madam Chair, I do know if, if, sorry, I did not know, but Mr. Andrew Chung Park, who is the president and for the Park Office, had a letter in support of, and I don't know if anyone here is going to testify and read it, but if not, I wouldn't...
All right. Let me call first, yeah. So if anyone wishing to testify on this bill, we do have some people signed in, that is... Please, and Director, are you going to testify on this bill as well? Director Borja? So we have Kyung Mo Koo. Is that you?
Yes.
Thank you. And Young S. Koo? All right, thank you. All right. You may proceed.
Half a day, Senators. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here. As the Vice Speaker has mentioned, we previously did a land exchange. The reason why we need to do the land exchange was, we were having some difficulties with safety issues. We had a lot of vandalism at our property. And what we wanted to do is, we want to gate up our parking lot and our warehouses, so that we can reduce the amount of vandalism that we were experiencing. We also wanted to provide some lighting in the area, just because there weren't any streetlights, and residents who lived in the back, they would often have some issues driving onto our property as well. So in order to do the land exchange, our Momo Corporation actually exchanged 746 square meters of our property for 384 square meters, just so that the residents who lived in the back would have safer and wider roads to drive on. We also provided with some lighting in the area, so that the residents wouldn't have issues late at night, especially since we were putting up some gates to protect our property. After we did the land exchange, we realized that the land that we exchanged is no longer, was adjacent to our property, but in order for us to use it, utilize it properly, we needed to do a zone change from R2 to a commercial property. And that's why we are here before you today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Director Borja?
Yes, I was wondering if there was a map available. The lots described in Bill 329-36 are not technically established. The map used as Exhibit A in Public Law 3582 was never recorded, so the split zone doesn't exist. The land exchange, although authorized by Public Law 35-82, has not been effectuated since the map, 338 FY 2018, has not been approved. We checked on the status of the map before we came down here. The map's status, as of 10/19/2022, the map was returned to the surveyor for corrections on November 2021. I'm going to have to double-check that, because that's almost a year. But according to the records of land management, the map has not yet been approved, and the map was returned to the surveyor for corrections on November 2021. On February 15, 2022, Momo Corporation processed a building permit to construct two container homes that would be attached, therefore declaring it a duplex on Lot 5071-1-2. And that was cleared by the Planning Division, because that lot was a, met the zoning requirements for that building permit that they applied for. So the most serious problem is the status of that map, 338 FY 2018. Our records show that that map was returned to the surveyor for corrections on November 2010 to 1, and has not yet been resubmitted to land management. That's what the records show.
Thank you very much, Director. I missed the date of the building permit.
February 15, 2022. That's the date that it was cleared by land management.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, Vice Speaker, would you like to begin or end with questions or comments for the panel?
None at this time.
Okay, so, all right. That testimony clears up a lot, because my question was going to be, we already have a law for split zoning and how they can remedy a split zone, you know, but, and I had written a letter to land management asking whether any requests to avail of that remedy was made. The split zone, pretty much, they pick one, and they process that way. And then I had asked if the consolidation map had ever been recorded, if these lots are indeed consolidated or not. And is the rejection of the map have to do with the split zone or not? Is that a reason?
You know, it could be a lot of things. It's not necessarily a split zone, because you can, you know, you can split up your map and whatever, you know, if your property is a zone here, and you do something with your property, it's a zone. But when properties are like this, that they may be next to a different zoning, and that would, but resubdividing your map doesn't necessarily, it could create a split zone, but for the most part, really no. And there is an administrative process for a split zone.
Right. Okay. So I just want to make sure we're not in a catch-22, that they can't get the maps approved because of the zoning. That's not the issue.
I wouldn't think so.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, Mr. Yu, yeah, are you aware of this, about the maps?
So, we did hire a surveyor.
If you could turn the microphone on? Thank you.
So we did hire a surveyor, and from what I'm aware of, the maps were submitted. I wasn't aware that they were returned. And we did ask the surveyor to join this meeting, but unfortunately, they weren't available. So, yes, I'm not too sure on the exact process of how it works.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if you could ask Mr. Yu who his surveyor is?
Oh, could you tell us the name of the surveyor?
Madam Chair, the reason why I ask is that recently, in the past several months, one of our major surveyors passed away, and some of his maps are pending.
The father?
Who is it? I'm sorry?
Wait. The father passed away, but is there a son? Sorry, we'll wait.
The surveyor's name is Dennis S. Bolakas?
Bolakas. I believe both of them are student practice, Dennis Junior and Dennis Senior.
Okay. Okay. And that's who did the maps that we relied on when we passed the law in the last term? So that's the same map? Yeah, so there was supposed to be a consolidation map, right, filed? And there was a draft of that map that we used to pass that law? And so, yes, so the summary is for today, that this consolidation map has not yet been approved, filed. All right, so we need to determine the issue and maybe resolve that. And, but any other questions from any other senator, Titekwe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you kind of explain, when we're talking about two containers being put together to make one, is it the office or home that they were talking about earlier?
Actually, yes, we do have the two containers, but they're not actually being used at the moment. We were hoping to resolve this issue.
Okay, so by resolving it to allow for commercial use? I mean, this is to, so the containers, this two containers put together is going to be used for?
We were hoping to use it for the business.
Okay, so it's not like residential or anything, it's just going to be for like storage room or something, or office space?
Actually, we haven't determined the exact use of it for now.
But it won't be living, it won't be a living range?
No, it won't be living there. Right now, we just acquired the containers, and they are parked there at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Is there any reason why, there's a process to go about, you know, any kind of zone changing being done through the, I guess, vetted through land management? And have you ever gone that route, to do it that way?
So...
Vetted through land management, where they have a public hearing, they go through the, what is that, Mr. Borja, the Guam Land Use Commission?
That's correct, Guam Land Use Commission.
Yeah, to go in front of Guam Land Use Commission? Have you attempted that route?
One moment. I'll let my, the president of the company speak.
Oh, okay, please. Just state your name, okay, for the record, and?
Hi, my name is Young Suk Koo, the owner of the Momo Corporation. Recently, they were not to put it in commercial zone, since our business is getting a little more busy, and we hardly to find merchandise on Guam. So we are, you know, trying to bring more items from the states, and then we need more storage space. So that's why we're requesting for the commercial property to try and to build additional warehouses. So that was our requesting. Actually, the, our consultant, Mr. Ba, was been working together with this, and then he was mentioning earlier about the survey, they returned the map to survey. He was handling our consulting, and he's off island right now, traveling mainland, so we need to find more about this. Everything was done, and that's why we put it on the, requesting bill has been, you know, trying to change. But if some part is not complete, and all, like what Director Borja says, if they return it, if not complete, then we will follow up to make it complete, and then we will bring back this again.
That's very good of you, thank you. But my question was, did you go through the process of Guam Land Use Commission to do this change, to do this zoning change? Did you make an effort? Yeah.
You know, because we're not very familiar with the process, we did hire a consultant, and they have been working with the surveyor. Unfortunately, like I mentioned, we're not too familiar with the exact process, so...
But you hired somebody, I mean, you paid somebody to kind of, who's very familiar with the process?
Yes.
And what did he recommend? That you just go straight to the legislature instead of going to the Land Use Commission?
I'm sorry, that I was not fully understanding. My son was explaining some Korean language. Actually, that when we exchanged the property last year, the next step, when we do the zone changing, I think that it has to be same legislature has to be approved. That's why we've been asking our surveyor to follow this one. So actually, surveyor was been, he was saying it was been done, so we need to find more about, you said, it was returning to surveys, I need to find more about that.
Okay, I've just been made aware of a testimony from Marvin Aguilar, who used to work for land management for many years. I guess he's doing this as a consultant. But I don't see...
Madam Speaker? If I may? Sorry, I, we, the senator was saying that she got something from Mr. Aguilar. Do we have a copy of that? Do we have a copy of that?
Yeah, I have a copy. I guess, if you, give us a minute so we can get to the other Senators.
Yeah, I'm gonna read the relevant part of Mr. Aguilar's testimony. The second paragraph says, "As noted in Bill 329, the consolidation of properties that created Lot 5007-3 new inadvertently created a split zone of C and R2. The public law's intent to include additional land for commercial use was unintentionally affirmed in affirming a full commercial zone for Lot 507-3 new, and thus created a force error for operators of seven-day supermarket to essentially undergo a two-pronged land use process to achieve full commercial zone status to the Guam Land Use Commission review process. If left unaffirmed, MOMO Corporation will have no recourse but to obtain both an approved zone change to relieve its split zones designation status, and then apply for either a zone variance or conditional use permit under the procedural guise of the commission. And although the commission has achieved great strides in moving request applications forward, the process of rezoning property in itself is systematically lengthy timeline-wise and may possibly take up one year to come to fruition. This length of time will cause an undue burden on MOMO Corporation, especially in a time where all commercial activities on the island struggle to recover from the pandemic. But by approving the bill, immediately relief, immediate relief can be obtained by realizing a full commercial zone for Lot 5007-3 new, and MOMO Corporation can commit to further planning efforts to unify and expand its operations. For this reason, and MOMO Corporation's continued support of its surrounding community, I believe the legislature's kind and favorable consideration of Bill 239 will serve as rightful service to the people of Guam." That's from Marvin Q. Aguilar.
Madam Chair, what's the name of the consultant?
Marvin Q. Aguilar. It was received at 12:15, former chief planner from the Department of Land Management. It was received at 12:15 today. Thank you. Taitekwe, any other questions?
No, but, you know, I do understand the situation for many of businesses that are struggling because of the pandemic, and we're trying to do, and make concessions for everybody to try and get back on track, you know, and it can be lengthy going through the Guam Land Use Commission. But actually, we've created a law so that it does, things do go in that direction because a lot of the information and maps and everything that we're asking for here today, because none of us is, you know, pros at this, or, you know, know how to read these surveyical maps and things like that, you know? It's, it becomes difficult. But I do understand the need for your business on Guam, and it is just a small area that needs to be changed. So I, you know, at this point, I will continue to look at all the other information that's provided and seek other guidance from Department of Land Management on just where the location is. But I appreciate your time being here, and I do understand, you know, the need to speed this up. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I'm not a fan of legislative rezoning. Now, the 14th year I've been in the legislature, only voted for one rezoning, and that was introduced by Senator Angel Santos to return a property back in Agania Heights to its original zoning before the legislature rezoned it because of the objections of the residents who, after the fact, found out what their neighboring property was being rezoned to. I wanted to ask the Director of Land Management, how complicated would be? It's ironic, you have a former chief planner who's now a consultant who's lamenting on the lengthy process at land management, a process he used to oversee. Interesting. Is this a difficult issue to resolve through land management, through the process that's been set up? Because if we accommodate this company, are we accommodating every company? And let's just get rid of the whole review process and just, let's just, you know, have a fiesta down here and just keep rezoning properties and creating more problems?
Well, you know, I agree with the comment that former chief planner Marvin Aguilar said that basically during his time, it took a long time to process it, but I think when this administration came in, I think we speeded it up a little bit. I think you guys can see. Next commission meeting, we have six applications on tap, and with the encouragement of Senator Telotai Tegui's Bill 5, we have, we have, you know, speeded up the application review committee, so I don't think it's any extraordinary time on it. A lot of the delays that we're seeing now is really making sure that the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted on the public notices. But I think we've done quite a bit in cutting that time short.
So if this company were to go through the process through land management, you don't see any compli, I mean, I appreciate the fact they've addressed the, you know, the easement issue and the lighting and the safety to the neighborhood there. I understand what their desire is to do, and it makes sense in that location, that's pretty much a commercial zoning to begin with. So I mean, I don't think it's incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood.
It would be a complicated application, but I don't think that it would take any longer than, you know, any other application, really.
But it can be resolved through your, through the existing process?
You know, it depends what the application says. I don't wanna pre-approve an application, but it is, you know, it can be taken to the process.
Well, again, it's just a concern I have because, again, anytime things come into the political realm, especially they continued in the past, and obviously, the continued rezoning through the legislature's created other problems. Most landowners sometimes have no idea what we're doing down here until, you know, an auto mechanic shop gets built next to their house, and all of a sudden, they're wondering, how did this happen? I mean, if you ask me right now, what is my lot number? I gotta go back and look at my mortgage deed probably to know exactly what my lot number is. So I'm just concerned because I think we, by sidestepping the process and not having those concerns addressed, we might be creating other problems, you know? The political, we're not all knowing up here. I mean, we're here piecing pieces of paper together to try determining what the map looks like, and I'm not an expert map reader. So I just want to relay that, colleagues. I have reservation about that because I just don't think the legislature is a venue under which we should be addressing zone changes when we've created a mechanism in this government to deal with it. If it's inefficient, if we don't like the way it works, then we can change it, we can oversight, we can, you know, see what their performance level is with regards to that. But, you know, it's like making me a doctor doing an operation, I, you know, I don't have the expertise to do that. And I just am a little concerned when we politicize the process of rezoning. It's unfair to everybody else that's expected to stand in line. With that, Madam Speaker, I have no further question or comment.
Well, you know, Madam Senator, if I could just add, he does say in there that it may possibly take up to one year to come to fruition. So if you submit your application and you don't have your map ready, and in this particular case, it was given to the surveyor a year ago, almost a year ago, then certainly it takes a year.
We have had oversight of the Guam Land Use Commission, and I think they did commit to a process of 90 days, and I have seen improvement. I'm not sure if they've, they've conformed to the 90 days, but I think from what I've seen, it has improved. I think the Director's correct about that. I'm going to now allow the sponsor of the bill to close or ask questions or whatever.
Thank you so very much, Madam Speaker, and I truly appreciate you putting this bill on the agenda. And again, as the author of the legislation, this bill was introduced to literally eliminate an inadvertent split zoning designation. We thought when the bill was introduced back in the 35th Guam legislation, that we would have corrected everything and have this family or this company go through the process, and it took a very long time just to, working through the bill and the introduction of the last bill that was done on 154-3, it has already been four years and counting. And even before that, it took a couple of years because of the not being able to get the quarms and all that as the application was going through that process. So when the family had come up to ask me based on the concerns and the uniqueness of this process, they said that the request would come through the legislature and work it out, and because I was the one who worked on the previous legislation, they had requested a meeting with our office to see if they can correct this because it wasn't the intent, it wasn't the legislature's intent to have this happen. It was the intent to support the efforts based on the bukhart trail and making sure that everything was conforming. So in that effort, Madam Speaker, I appreciate it. I understand we've made strides. You've said it, you're the Oversight Chair on Lands, and the Guam Land Use Commission has literally made a commitment to follow through on the applications that are going through. But in this case, it almost compelled to having to come back here to fix something that was, wasn't supposed to happen, like I said, inadvertent. So, thank you, I appreciate it. I thank you, Mr. Borja, for your institutional knowledge and literally pulling through, I mean, providing the information today. And Madam Speaker, if I may, there was just one more testimony that was provided. Mr. Park really wanted to be here, and he couldn't, so I leave that up, I yield that back to you if you want it read, or just know that it was submitted. So if I may, I know it's already 4 o'clock, but it's a letter dated October 17th to the Honorable Speaker, letter of support for public, on public hearing, Bill Number 329-36COR. Half a day, Speaker, Chairperson of the Committee and Committee members. My name is Andrew Chong Park. I present this written testimony in favor of Bill 329-36. First of all, I would like to extend my gratitude to Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes for sponsoring this bill. I am a businessman who have made Guam his home since the middle of the 1980s. In 1989, I opened my new business as a tax consultant with expertise in accounting and tax preparation service to various businesses on the island. Within that timeframe, I have become close to Mrs. Young Suk Koo, the President of MOMO Corporation. I have known her and assisted her in many business matters for the last 33 years, and we have nurtured a friendship and bond in both our private and professional lives that as, as may be said in our island culture, we are like brother and sister. Mrs. Young Suk Koo has been a resident of Guam for far over 30 years. She came to Guam from humble beginnings and worked hard to create MOMO Corporation that was incorporated on December 1987, and has grown as Seven Day Market in serving the surrounding and extended community. The success of Seven Day Market is based on MOMO Corporation's philosophy to providing good quality grocery products at a decent price to its daily customers. The growth of its customer base resulted in the need to expand support services, and therefore, from a business perspective, it was only logical to expand its facilities to accommodate dry and frozen warehousing. The desire to expand outward was not an easy road. When MOMO Corporation obtained its property, it was well aware that the small community to its needed access through an existing alleyway that MOMO Corporation wholeheartedly acknowledged and continues to support to this day. This is an expression of the corporation's willingness to be part of its community and support it as much as possible. Thus, this bill is a testament to the legislature's principles to encourage, to encourage the protection and health and general welfare of the people of Guam by granting the relocation of the public right-of-way, public safety and general welfare was avail to enclave of private properties that have, until the passage of Public Law 35-82. Utilized a bukhart trail that was not clearly defined and traversed over busy commercial activity. When the bukhart trail was relocated, a defined 40-foot wide right-of-way was created to ensure safe travel for said property owners. Proper public access for these property owners is but only partially relieved. True access to the newly relocated right-of-way via East Titanal Street is currently hampered by encroaching building structures. Within Public Law 3582, MOMO Corporation continues to allow use of its portion of its property for temporary access as opposed to the rightful public access until such time as Government of Guam rectifies the issue. The resulting effects of Public Law 3582 represents a rare instance where a local business has taken steps not only to achieve its goal but clearly contribute to its community. I humbly request your fair and favorable consideration in approving Bill 329-36 to encourage MOMO Corporation's extended contribution to the community. Yours truly, Andrew Park, President and Chief Tax Preparer. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for at least letting me read that into the record because there was, there was long history since the 35th. Sinamasi.
Sinamasi, Vice Speaker. All right. So I want to thank you for your testimony today, and I know we'll follow up, and then we'll see what else needs to be done in regards to this bill. Director Borja, again, Sinamasi for your testimony, and thank you to the?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So this, they're being known for the testimony. This hearing is concluded on Bill Number 283-36COR. It is now 4:04 PM. Thank you.